Okay, I'm going to call this meeting and Boston School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Boston Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. And I'm going to ask you to join me in the salute to the flag. And we will have a moment of silence after the salute to the flag in memory of Brian Tarr, who passed away last week. Do I believe it's
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oral communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. I'd like to welcome you all. We have a presentation to recognize the student athletes of Boston High School. And I am going to hand it over to our athletic director, Brian Lefatter. And we're going to have the school committee come help.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Paul, School Committee. It's my honor as the new athletic director, the school committee superintendent, Mr. Sapphire reached out, wanting to honor our student athletes from the fall season, the tremendous season that all of our sports, all of our athletes had, but specifically the individuals that are in here tonight, who wanted to take our time and honor them. So again, I really appreciate the school committee and Dr. Sapphire setting this up. So what I'll do really quickly, I'll just introduce the individual. The individual can come up. Dr. Sapphire, a citation for you, and the committee will congratulate you, and we'll go from there. So after each one, you can applaud, and then we'll get to the next one. The first one, the first group I'm doing here are the Northeastern Conference All-Stars that were recognized for their performances past fall season. Number one, Andrea Nathalie from the boys soccer team. Sure, yep. Andrea, he is a senior this year, captain on the team, suffered unfortunately a pretty serious injury the first game, but that shows how much of a leader he was on this team. And he stuck with the team the whole time, he wasn't able to come back later in the season. And then still for the league, to honor him as an All-Star showed how much of a leader he was on the field. And it was a great pleasure getting to watch him. Great job, Andrea. Next, from the boys soccer team, NEC All-Star, was senior Mohammed Al-Swadani. Mohammed is senior as well. He was honestly, in my first season as an athletic director, there's lots of paperwork I found out. He was, for other reasons, an MIA waiver had to be presented in his case to be able to play. And dealing with Mohammed, he was one of the most respectful and fine young gentlemen at this age. And every day I see him in school, he always says hello to me, sir, and everything, and he makes me feel older, but I'm a much more respectful young man, and I wish him the best with everything. Good job. For girls soccer, Lauren Wood. Lauren, as well as a senior captain of the girls soccer team. She also participates in indoor and outdoor track. As soon as the soccer season was done, I saw her every day working hard in the field house preparing for her next season. She is also a member of the National Honor Society, so a true definition of a student athlete, so congratulations. Also from the girls soccer team is Elizabeth Lizzy Houston. Lizzy as well, captain on the girls soccer team, is another one of the true definition of a multi-sport athlete, playing both basketball and softball. Is also very busy, National Honor Society, ROTC, and I believe, if I've got this right, the president of the student council? Next up, Ruby Melvin from the field hockey team. Ruby was obviously a member of our record-setting field hockey squad this year, one of the captains leaders, and we've also a captain of both our girls basketball and lacrosse team, as well as the class president, so she's got herself quite a full plate. Thank you, Ruby. From the field hockey team, Bailey Marshall. It's been, like I said, a pleasure for me this fall to finally get out there to see more sports. Everyone knows I'm a baseball guy, so I've looked at baseball fields, but getting to see field hockey, soccer, boys soccer, girls soccer, cross country, everything, the wide variety. There was one thing I did witness with Bailey, every game I went to, I was scared to death for all of the players. She could handle the ball every time, it was very impressive. She also, I look forward to watching on the ice as a ice hockey player, and congratulations. Also from the field hockey team, NEC All-Star, Rachel Rowell. And another member of our record-breaking field hockey team, a senior as well, also a member of the basketball team and softball team, and uses that speed quite well, as I witnessed in the final playoff game, watching her when Manchester Essex was getting tired as, where are we in a great battle? Rachel was the one that seemed to be going 100 miles per hour faster than everybody else, and it was impressive. And then also as a member of the National Honor Society, so great job, Rachel. From the cross country team, Leah Wuzol. Leah, she is a senior, and she has been, for multiple years, at track, indoor and outdoor, and we'll be reading a lot about her in the next couple of months, and she is a tremendous athlete, she's really represented Boston well the last four years in the cross country and track program. So if you do see Leah, congratulate her. Also from the cross country team, freshman Nicholas Poulain. Nick is our young buck here today, which is tremendous, because now we're going to hopefully get to see him do these type of honors for the next three and a half years. I know he participates in indoor track, and I'm sure the spring might be a little bit of a conflict. He was a baseball player, but he might be too good in track to be able to do that, so whatever he does, I look forward to seeing that, and great job, Nick. All of those were our Northeastern Conference All-Star awards. From there is then the NEC All-Conference Award, which is a more limited award, and even more prestigious than obviously the tremendous awards that we just provided, but these guys here have also worked multiply hard. First from the boys soccer team, junior Anthony Suazo. Then thankfully, as I said, he was only a junior, and Anthony was actually voted by all the coaches in the conference as the league MVP as a junior. Also from the boys soccer team, Elijah Elliott. Elijah is a senior, captain on the team. Again, myself being honored to be able to watch more games this fall was an honor to watch him, his footwork and everything that he did on the field as a leader, but then also physically. Elijah had a tremendous season, and I'm looking forward to see what he does in the future. From the field hockey team, All-Conference Award, Jemima Groh. Jemima is another very busy student athlete, also participates in the softball team, member of the National Honor Society, the band, so we had to make sure we fixed a couple field hockey games to make sure she could get to a football band game. Field hockey, which I was more than happy to try and adjust. And she was also nominated as one of the top 60 players in Eastern Mass, it's a game every year that high school players are selected to be in, and it's not a very common thing to have someone from your school, so it was an honor to have that. And if I get this right again, vice president of the student council? The next two are other multi-sport student athletes, so they're not here, I'll introduce them together, because from what it seems like, they basically do everything together. Mia Sala and Kate Delaney, both from the field hockey team. We're very fortunate that Mia is only a sophomore, Kate is a junior, so we're going to get to see the two of them for a couple more years. Tonight they do have hockey practice out of town, so they're busy with that commitment. And they both play lacrosse as well, so again, if you see Mia and Kate Delaney, wish them well, or congratulate them. Another individual that I just found out unfortunately could not make it tonight, but is Colby Mitchell, senior on the golf team. Colby has been probably one of the top five most prolific golfers in the history of Boston High School. So what he has done the past four years, three NEC conference titles, has been absolutely amazing. On top of that, he is a hockey player, and like I said, one of the best golfers in Boston history, so us to be able to witness that, and you see others in town, Josh Sala, who we see in the news quite often, this is a kid that might be on the same path as that, so it's been great to watch him, and again, congratulate him if you see him. The best two student athletes we're going to honor tonight, we're both recipients of the Moynihan Lumber North Shore Student Athlete of the Month. This is a very prestigious award. When I first started as the AD and I was walking down the hallway looking at the awards, the trophies and everything, there is a few. We have a handful of former athletes, student athletes that received this. This is, this isn't just our conference, this is all schools throughout the entire North Shore. So I had our coaches put a heavy emphasis, we want to push our student athletes. So we've been throwing nominations in as much as possible, and it's paid off. We have been very lucky to have both the September and October Student Athletes of the Month for the female side, which no other schools had that obviously yet this year or recently, so it's been quite an accomplishment. The first one I want to call up is Maisie Groh. Maisie, as you can see, has had suffered an injury early in the season, she was having basically a historical season for our girls soccer team in goal. Unfortunately with that, not saying she was all the team, but moving other parts around and having someone else play goalie and this and that, which that goalie did a great job, but the team, it just wasn't the same not having her on the field. But she was tremendous the rest of the season on the sidelines, supporting her team, being the captain as she is and the leader. She's also a softball player and a member of the National Honor Society, so wishing Maisie the best of luck and congratulations on the award. And the October recipient of the Moynihan Lumber North Shore Student Athlete of the Month is Tracy Wood. Tracy, this one was just recently announced, so this was great news, like we said, to get the back-to-back. Tracy's had a tremendous career in multiple sports, an All-Star in softball as well, has participated in swimming, National Honor Society, and the vice president, I believe, of your class. Ruby, did I mention that you have a president?
Yeah.
Like I said, I want to make sure I'm learning these kids what they do and everything, so you did all right. But again, to be able to pull this off today, she had a nice interview with one of the radio stations, and Groh can listen to that online, and tremendous career so far, looking forward to the rest of your senior year. So again, thank you very much to the school committee, Dr. Sapphire, tremendous work to all of our student athletes so far, we've got one-third of our season down. Many of these athletes in here are not only, like we said, great athletes, but good students. The majority are honorable students, their attendance is tremendous, and that's where we see what sports, the impact they have on these young student athletes. And so we look forward to, many of them are playing winter sports, and then they'll get ready for spring, so we'll root them on the rest of the way, so thank you again.
Wow. That was great. We are so happy and so proud, and wish you all success in the future. Prove that we can be successful currently. So, you know, we just, it's a very great day for Boston's sports, and we're really proud. So thank you, thank you for all the effort you put into, thank you, thank you parents for giving you the direction to persevere, which is a big piece of being successful in sports, so thank you again. Moving on, we will go to our student advisory.
Thank you. Well, as Mr. Lefatter mentioned, winter sports started. Our Thanksgiving pep rally on Wednesday, the 21st, I guess, Wednesday the 21st, that went well. And there was also a good turnout at the game, the away game for Danvers and Boston, even though it was record temperatures, like 12 degrees.
Oh, okay. So we have, for Thanksgiving, the school as a whole, the teachers, staff collected 55, enough money for 55 Thanksgiving baskets for the open door that were donated. And on Friday, the 14th, we have a blood drive, which we're starting to organize, so we're going to have the Red Cross come and kids and staff donate blood. Yeah, I think that's
We started our Christmas basket collection, like our money for Christmas baskets already, it's December 1st, it's very soon. We're trying to get more than 55, like more, as many baskets as we can from each organization, like student council, NHS, even, maybe even sports teams even want to donate. We're going to try and get more baskets.
Baskets for?
It's like to feed families from the open door food pantry, to feed families for Christmas dinner and meal. I better go and make the basket vendors.
Any questions? Thank you very much. As always, you're welcome to stay.
Congratulations.
Right, what you can, right. Congratulations, by the way, sorry I'm late.
Thank you.
But you know I love you.
Okay, the consent agenda, is there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to move?
I will give the consent agenda up for a second.
Okay, all on David, say hi.
Hi.
Close, Janice. And we're going to move on to our deliberations on education issues, and we're going to start with our sped director, who's here to give us an update on special education.
Good evening, and thank you Chairman Paul and members of the school committee. I always like to start with sort of the tally of where we're at with our special ed numbers. As of today, we have 773 students identified with a disability in the district. The number is slightly lower than last year at this time, which was 777, but district-wide, we absolutely continue to have a high percentage of students identified with a disability. The state average is 17.7, our district average is 25.3 of our student population. Similar districts again, from the DART analysis, range from 18.4% to 23.2. All of the DART districts and some of our more local districts, each of them saw an increase by a percentage or two this 17, 18 school year. Lemonster is in our, DART is a DART district, they're at 23%. Randolph is 23.2, Gardner 22.7. Locally, Salem is at 22.5, Beverly at 20.7, Rockport at 21.2. And as I said, each of these districts did see a slight increase during the 17, 18 school year. Our number of students placed out of district is higher than last year, we right now have 61 students placed out. We continue to tuition three students from a neighboring school district into two of our specialized sub-separate programs, one program at Boston High and our preschool program. While we were able to bring back three students to in-district programs for this year, we did find it necessary to find more restrictive programming for a number of students who were either move-ins that required not a district placement per their IEP, or students whose behaviors precluded them from accessing our own in-district programs. At this time, our projections for FY '20 look pretty good, that we will probably have fewer than 55 students standing at this replacement. We have a number of students with high tuitions that are going to be graduating, or students turning 22. In October, I'm not sure if you saw this in the news, Governor Baker passed new legislation that will broaden the requirements for districts in screening of all students for dyslexia. Dyslexia is a language-based learning disability, often individuals with dyslexia have trouble organizing their language, spelling, learning letters and sounds. About 5 to 20% of the population have a reading disability, but of those, 5 to 20%, about 85% of those are actually believed to have dyslexia. So the new legislation is going to call for earlier screening, as young as preschool age. Besides the screening, the legislation will require school districts to train classroom teachers about the learning disability and its signs, and signs of students in classrooms that may have a dyslexia, and also intervention strategies. It's also going to require schools to adopt evidence-based dyslexia remediation programs. Under the federal law, students with dyslexia qualify for special education, but advocates are pushing Congress to provide more resources for early screening and intervention. Right now, we're just waiting for the Department of Education to take a look at that legislation, and then guide districts, probably this spring we'll have word firm guidance regarding what our responsibilities will be. Currently, our elementary schools do use a variety of screeners that do include letter and sound recognition tasks. Whether or not we'll have to change that practice or purchase a new intense screening for dyslexia, we'll be waiting for the DESI to put out those diagnoses. Right now, the elementary schools do use foundations as their reading program, that is a multisensory evidence-based program for students with reading disabilities. Also, some of our students are receiving another program called Blighling Letters, which is another multisensory approach to learning to read. In response to this, my program leaders at each of the buildings, we've been talking about sort of beefing up our knowledge base regarding looking at the neuropsych evaluations that we often receive from parents. Many times, parents will go outside of the district and get an evaluation if they have concerns about their students' reading abilities. Our psychologists are really our experts when looking at those neuropsych reports, but we've been finding that we need to sort of beef up our own knowledge base with our program leaders who are leading those meetings with parents. So we are going to be contracting with a neuropsychologist that consults with landmark schools to come in and do an $8 training, two days. She's going to be looking at the neuropsych evaluations and teaching our staff what each element of those sub-tests of the evaluation mean when it looks, when you're looking at dyslexia specifically. Little update on the, I'm sorry.
I have a question on the dyslexia, so I just wanted to ask that before you keep on, keep on moving on. So you indicated that the testing is going to start at a preschool age?
What, how? The screen. Screening, so how, is there going to be services available for parents who choose to send their children outside of our school district for preschool? In other words, if they go to a private preschool, are we going to offer any services to kids to identify, or is it just, we just screen them if they choose to come to the public schools at the kindergarten age? Well, we would do a screening for all those students if it's a student that's referred to the preschool.
Okay, only our preschool, not preschools through?
It depends if they get referred through EI or through pathways.
Okay.
And as far as receiving services, remember this is a tool to, so that we can look at the students and sort of at that age, to sort of keep a rate, to keep an eye on them, and sort of do some more progress monitoring, you know, because they're going to be starting to learn to read in first, second, third grade. But preschool's a pretty young age to start doing this screening, but I think if they find a good tool and it's helpful for teachers, then
No, I agree, I could say, you know, if we were going to offer a service like say on a weekend day or something where parents could bring their kids here that are choosing not to come to our preschool, just to see if there's any testing available?
If they have a suspected disability, or they suspect, we certainly would screen them.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Speaking of preschool, go ahead.
So, as always, the, you know, what, how in-depth are these screenings, what does it, what kind of cost is this?
So the screeners, right now, one of the screenings that we've looked at, it's a brief tool that you can use with preschoolers, it's maybe a $75 purchase, to purchase. We could also look at our own screeners and see if there's any additions that we really need to use. They're going to be looking at more just sound symbol recognition, letter identification. At that ages, there's not, there's not going to be a lengthy screen for dyslexia. But at least some of the precursor so that we may need to keep an eye on the student.
Do we have room in our day now, or is something else going to have to be moved aside?
Currently, they do screenings in preschool and in kindergarten, so it'll probably just be an addition to that. And it really might be a five to 10 minute addition to the screen. So just an update on the preschool, right now we have 135 preschoolers, 75 of those students receive special education services, we have 60 peers. Last year at this time, we had 60 students with special needs identified and 58 peers. As you're aware, we're going to be adding another classroom right after the holidays. That classroom will be an integrated class in the morning, so that'll have some students with IEPs or with disabilities and peers, and in the afternoon, that's going to be just students with IEPs, it's going to not going to be an integrated group, it'll be a sub-separate group. Right now, the projected numbers for that class are small, however, we have a number of referrals coming in from pathways and early interventions, so we do expect that that class will be at capacity by the end of the year. Recently, last month, the preschool hosted a family dinner again. Every year they have a spaghetti family dinner, and they bring in the open door who comes in and provides cookbooks for parents. This year they actually have a Spanish version for our families that don't speak English, obviously. They were provided information through the open door regarding SNAP benefits, which are the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. They also had the backyard growers come in, and they did activities with students around planting and growing plants, and the different things that they, as students can do, we have our own gardens out back here, if you've seen them, and so they talked about some of the things that they had to pick to make for the dinner.
It's blowing cold air.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry. I just, no, that's okay. Coming up December 12th. Where's the food? So coming up December So, coming up, December 12th at Gloucester High, I wanted to make sure this invitation got out to everyone here. Nancy Goodman, our Gloucester High Transition Coordinator, is putting together a transition fair for families. So that fair will give parents information about transition services. We start transition planning for students with disabilities at the age of 14. And that's very important because the sooner that we can start doing some transition services, the more likely that those students will be ready for graduation, post-secondary education. So the information that she is bringing in, she has 14 vendors. She has people from housing coming in, the YMCA is coming, people from supported employment programs. There's going to be a family advocacy vendor there. They will also be doing an hour-long workshop on guardianship for parents, which I think is really important. Also, there will be a workshop on eligibility for mass rehab, and Department of Developmental Services, and also a workshop on students that may be eligible for social security benefits. And again, Nancy encourages everyone to attend that event.
Is that for everyone? So when the announcement went out, or as I read the daily announcements, I wasn't quite clear as to what, what the audience was for that particular gathering?
Sure.
And there was nothing that talked about college or anything, so I was like, what, you know, who's this for?
Yep, this is specifically for students with disabilities that have an individual education plan.
Okay. Will the rest of the parents have questions, I notice?
I will let her know that that message needs to be added.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Just a little update on our CPAC, we finally do have a consistent person leading our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, Dawn Leoni. She joined us last spring. She's a master at social media, so she gets a lot of information out to parent groups that are following websites and our CPAC website. Last month, she had a workshop where she worked with a group of parents creating an IEP binder. So if you're a parent of a child with a disability and you have lots of testing and individual education plans, she helped them organize them. We purchased some office materials for her to pull this workshop. She had five parents come, which I thought was, was great, and she worked on how they can sort of collaborate with each other about collaterals that they may be using for counseling for their kids, or testing, or any other services that they receive. She has, we are still using the Federation for Children with Special Needs to provide trainings for parents. In January, we will have our Basic Rights in Special Education workshop. In March, the Federation is going to sponsor a workshop called an IEP for My Child, and that really is for parents that are new to the process, to explain the elements of an IEP and what occurs at team meetings and what kinds of information or questions they should bring to the table. In May, we will have our Turning Three Essentials meeting, which is, we draw a lot of people from pathways and from our own district. That's specific for students, for parents of students whose students will be turning three and just entering that process of eligibility. And speaking of the Federation, during the November 6th full-day PD, we had a speaker from the Federation present a workshop called Developmental Childhood Trauma and the Impact on Academic Performance. This was for our elementary and our high school paraprofessionals. We held the session at East Gloucester Elementary. She was a great presenter, she presented a lot of sort of data and information about research on how children's brains and their bodies change when they're exposed to trauma, and how prevalent really in, in our classrooms adverse childhood experiences really are occurring. She gave each of the staff a toolkit before they left. Really, it was a toolkit that had strategies for, you know, recognizing students that may have experienced trauma and sort of environmental and changes that they could make in their classroom for students that have experienced trauma. Also, some accommodations they could help provide those students, and also just strategies on listening to those students when they're, they're experiencing trouble. The feedback from the staff was very positive, and many of them stayed afterwards to ask questions, so it was a nice afternoon. That is it. Any questions?
You're covering quite a bit.
Yeah.
Just, I know, everybody knows this, but of the 61 students that we are sending out, how many go to the consortium? Is it almost half?
I would say a third.
A third?
Yeah.
Twenty?
Yeah, we started, we have a lot of students that may or may not fit the profile there that we sent to Solstice Day School in Raleigh. So we have a pretty good partnership with them. They've been really great about recognizing when students are ready to transition back, and will start speaking to students early on about, you know, usually that middle school to high school level is when they start wanting to go back and be at high school and graduate with their peers. So we have a nice partnership with them. But I would say a third, as I look at the list.
Any other questions?
I will report as always.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on. At the request of a number of committee members, we have placed the fieldhouse floor and track on the agenda, and just for the record, about, how long ago? Three, four months ago? We, as is our duty because of the city ordinance, we sent a request to the city council that we, they pay attention to the track, the floor in the, in the fieldhouse, and that we feel that it's a priority that needs to be done. This floor was basically failed right after the high school was commissioned, the fieldhouse was commissioned. It has never been what it was supposed to be. There was a lawsuit brought against the contractor and the architect. The, the, it failed, the complaint against the contractor failed because they had a chain daughter in place. And we could go into that, but that's not what we're here for. They did receive some money from the architectural firm, and it was in the amount of about $375,000, which wasn't nearly enough to fix the floor. So as we waited for some resolution to that, now, I'm talking about 2005, 2006, the, there was never anything that got brought forward, things were very tight in that period too. But nothing was ever done, except some money sat there, and then when many of the other safety issues came up with the high school, we transferred that money to the DPW for the, so they could fix windows and a number of other things that had failed that were affecting the safety of students and teachers. So we're here tonight to try to reinvigorate the discussion about how we're going to get this floor fixed. It's been a long time, we've asked Mr. Lefada to stay, and we've asked other people to come and comment about what it programmatically means to our athletics and our TE department.
I think, as you're saying, I just learned last week at the student athlete meeting that the bleachers motors are broken and burnt out, and that, that's something to have to discuss also, that unless they're able to have them moved in and out, which is the manual process.
That was taught about BNF, and that they have a resolution to, a short-term resolution to that.
Paul Lombard, who was told me this evening that he couldn't make it, he had another meeting, that you sent him that, and he said, as chair of the city council, that he said he would like to see a plan put in place.
Well, a plan.
Yeah, well, he said he would like to see a plan, he'd like to see what, you know, a process, a plan. I'm only, don't shoot the messenger.
Okay, I just would like to say that I, I requested from the administration a plan, and I've requested it from DPW, and when Mr. Hafey was in, the facilities director, he, we requested it a number of times, and all he ever came back was, oh, it's going to cost a million dollars. And I said, and that was just derived from a square foot, he's saying it's going to cost whatever it is, $20 a square foot, or $30 a square foot, or whatever. But what we'd like to talk about, and that's why Brian and Aldous are here, is how this built, this facility that the city spent a lot of money on, and is, should be the showpiece of our, on with Noel Stadium, of our athletic facilities, and is not. So Brian, would you like to just tell us a little bit about how, how the condition of the, the fieldhouse affects what you're trying to do?
Definitely. Obviously, I'm stepping in newer to this, this is my first season with it, so as a baseball coach, I use the indoor facility occasionally, but not often. Thankfully, sort of like Mr. Distino has great experience with it, we'll be able to provide even more details for the sports he's been involved with and how much of an impact. But immediate impact from myself overseeing the program, we obviously just started this week, number one is the track and field team. And I don't even know offhand how many years it's been since we've hosted an indoor track meet, when that's a historically very strong program, between the cross-country indoor and outdoor track programs, Gloucester has a great history. And at this point now, we're unable to host at our own indoor facility. So that does hurt, and that's obviously due to the track condition. Part of it now is the motors being out on some of the bleachers. Just the other day, myself personally, with about 15 DPW workers, had to manually push it in, and it wasn't a quick, easy job to do, just to make sure we had the track open so they'd be able to start their winter practices. With holes and various things, actual street cones nailed to various parts of the gym floor to prevent injury, I mean, obviously, safety's the number one issue for anything we're covering, but to have to go to that extent seems a little extreme, to have big orange street cones there. So that does obviously affect all of our track and field events. The fact that those student athletes don't get to perform in front of, at their home facility is a huge problem. Then also your basketball teams, your entire basketball program. As of right now, thankfully, the DPW did have some guys come work on, eight of the 10 hoops are functional, where I know just in the recent past, it was even less than that. And you're trying to run multiple teams, practices, that only so many of the hoops go down, and some days, it's, every day's a different story, you could show up and it wasn't working. And that's difficult for a coach that has a practice plan to try and get the most out of 90 minutes, or an hour, two hours for his practice. So that's been very difficult for them as well, and then obviously the bleachers because of that. As of right now, our short-term plan is the bleachers and the motors don't work, we will just keep in and pull up the other side, so the fans will be on one side of the court that they're usually not on, so it's a short-term fix. But obviously, we would prefer to have a full-capacity house of fans, that we wouldn't need both bleachers. But in the end, I mean, myself, as someone that's worked in sports facilities for a long time, it's about pride and taking care of your facilities, your venues and everything.
That's a good word, taking care.
Yes, and so.
It's also taking responsibility too for years.
Yep.
And it's also, we repair things, not for nothing, but we repair things, I'm sorry I'm doing out of order.
No, no, excuse me.
No, I'm just saying that we all have to.
No.
No, you're right.
You ask them to come here and.
No, no, I'm not yelling at him, I'm saying we do, we do need to take, we need to take responsibility, we need to repair these things, and we need also to, to continue to, when we repair things, and they break, and then we wait, and we wait, and we wait, a small hole gets into a humongous hole. Same thing with the outside bleachers, or the inside bleachers, or the roof, or this. We need to come up with a plan and say, you know what, I don't want to talk about in the past, they weren't here, I don't want to talk about Hafey, I want to talk about what Paul Lombard said, and let's put a plan together, and let's figure out now, we've got Mike, because Mike wasn't here in 2005, we have Mike now, we have Joe, Mark, all of us, he needs to, will sit down and say, look, this needs to be repaired, the locker rooms is this, you know, you're right, and people need, how much is it going to cost, and let's plan it out. And then, when we do, we need to take responsibility of keeping repairing these things, when it happens. When that, when, when the floor wasn't done right, and I'm not blaming any, because half of us wasn't even here, but when it was done, when we're done, we should have done something right away, and we don't. Oh, we're going to go through this, or we're going to fix it, and then it keeps, what happens is, we lose lawsuits, or we lose the warranty, or we lose something. I'm just saying that you're right, it, it, it's, we just had a great, I missed it though, but we had, look at the soccer team, look at the field hockey team, look what's happening in our schools, it's great, you're encouraging these kids, you know, to go with the sports, to do things, let's make a plan, let's work together. That's all I'm saying. It's not against anyone, nobody, no, yeah.
Can I ask the mayor a question? Does that mean that you are absolutely committed to finding the funding to fix this?
We're going to try, we're going to try.
Because we can't raise any money.
Absolutely, I know that.
You know, so, yeah, I just want to.
Well, you know what, did we plan on the $1 million roof? And then when we did the roof, it wasn't the vents all, why put a new roof when all your vents have rotten? And then we found out the vents all needed to be repaired, so we put a new roof, we put the vents, we do that.
We're going to find that same damage up in the floor.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We just need a commitment from your administration.
That's all, we're all working together, our children are our first priority.
One at a time.
Can we go back and let Brian finish, because I'm curious to what else we're not doing in our schools besides basketball and track, and I want to hear the concerns of the athletic department.
Yep, thank you, I completely agree, I mean, obviously, as I said, it's upkeep, but that starts even with our student athletes, and having them learn to inspect their fields, their venues and everything. When I go in there after all the basketball practices, track, wrestling, everything that goes on, and they understand, okay, clean up all your trash, I don't want this place, it's, to be honest, somewhat embarrassing to walk in there now. If other schools come in and fans come in, it's not a place of pride right now for us. Well, you go into some of these newer fieldhouses and venues throughout the North Shore of the state, you go in there, and they're bright, they're clean, they're out of cap, and that's not completely on just the other departments or anything, I mean, some stuff is, but it starts with our student athletes and teaching them the right way. And so, that's something, our coaching staff, we've got great coaches in all, all of our sports right now that will follow that. So that, I think that's one of the big things, is teaching them that, so it starts at the bottom, but obviously, there's issues that are well before most of us were here, that I think need to get addressed hopefully sooner rather than later, and then it builds all of our programs, our youth programs, to start being proud to come in there, maybe hold some, like I said, when we can find, hold track and field events, it would be great to have the middle school be able to indoor track and field. Basketball, they're used in every other gym in the, in the city, and same with wrestling, we could hold large wrestling meets where you get tons of youth in there, and it just builds our program. So, like I said, I'm new to this right now, someone like Mr. Distino, he can offer even more information about this, because he's, as a head coach, he's been an assistant coach, he's been hands-on, and he's seen the immediate impact of, like I said, I think the most effective program throughout the winter has been the indoor track program through the last few years.
Would it be hard if I presented? So first and foremost, committee members, thank you for inviting me. Dr. Sapphire, thank you, and Brian, thank you for your support early on. It's only the third day of practice, but you feel the love. So currently, I'm the assistant track coach. For a number of years, I was the head coach, and then years before that, I was an athlete in the program. Track and field truly is the reason I stayed at Gloucester, there's no doubt about it. I went to, so I was fortunate enough to get a scholarship, a partial scholarship, to compete at the track and field at the collegiate level, and I had, you know, Coach Mun as my coach, and I wanted to be a teacher, so as things worked out, there was a coaching position available. I started coaching 11 years ago with the program, and I have it last, ever since. 11 years ago, the indoor facility was immaculate, it was spectacular. And as an athlete, when I was in high school, it was almost random. And if you look back and you can envision that facility, it wasn't built for a basketball court, okay? When you go to other facilities within the conference and likely within the state, those fieldhouse facilities are built around a basketball court. Bleachers pull out, and you watch a game, and there happens to be a track around that basketball court. Our fieldhouse is different. If you're in the fieldhouse, yes, it has bleachers, yes, it has a basketball court, but it has a 160-meter lane track, top-notch flooring system, that the track flooring itself, not the underlayment of course, but the, the track itself. Not that the conference permitted it, but we were able to use metal spikes to competing, which at any level collegiate, professionally, that's how you train. And it was a good decision to make. And it was a good decision to make, to make that flooring system the one that it was. And as we, you know, begin and conduct those conversations about updating the facility, I think that there needs to be a track person, myself, Dave Coleman, who's the head coach, or someone else that has intimate knowledge of track to be part of that community as we move forward. If you look at the fieldhouse, not the bleachers, but the balconies, those are for the track fans. If you look up to the second floor, fans are able to stand and lean on the railing and look down at the facility. They can see the track completely. The balconies, they can see the track completely. And as a coach, or as an athlete and now as a coach, we get parents all the time unliking other sports. They don't really understand track and field. Often, they didn't compete as an athlete in track and field. It's not like the other sports, where the football, the baseballs, the hockey's, the basketballs. People are familiar with that. So being in a setting like that, and having fans close, having fans able to, you know, ask questions and be part of that process, is unparalleled at our facility. We've gone four years, this will be our fourth year, that we haven't had a home meet. We also will not have a home meet outdoors this season, because the facility's not finished with the track. Our seniors will never have had a home meet for the indoor season. They will not be recognized for senior night. Our boosters will not get any money from concession. Our boosters struggle. We do fundraising. We do sell sweatshirts, t-shirts. We do a calendar rally, but that's it. Numbers are down, okay? And that's for a number of reasons, there's no doubt. And enrollment in the high school in general is down, so you can say, sure, it's because of that. We've added winter sports over the last couple of years, so you can say it because of that. There's no doubt in my mind that because we don't have an indoor facility, our numbers are down. I walked into the fieldhouse on Monday, and I said, where's the other half of the team? Some of them were running distance, but still. Okay, where is the other half of the team? When Newell Stadium was built, we knew, and we all know, kids like new stuff, right? They like new classrooms. They like new textbooks. They like new Chromebooks. They like new stuff, okay? We had a surge, and we've been building for a number of years because of the anticipation of, after nine years of not having a home meet outdoors, we're finally going to be able to host home meets again. The team was bigger than it's ever been. And in two years after opening up Newell Stadium, the girls won a conference championship, first time in almost two decades. It's not a coincidence. Yes, there's talented athletes. Yes, numbers are up. Yes, we have a coaching staff that works together and collaboratively and works with the kids. All of those things are yes. But there's no doubt that the facility influences kids' performance. Brian mentioned pride. Our program over the years have won numerous individual awards, team awards, coaching awards, awards at the conference level. And they've gone down slightly because we don't have a facility. We don't have an amazing facility to practice at. And yes, as Brian stated, we are running, literally running around cones that are drilled into the track surface. And I get it, believe me. I live in this community. I pay taxes. I understand it. I would much rather have that cone there than have one of our athletes, or a parent, or a visiting fan, visiting parent, you know, step along the hole in the floor and have another lawsuit. Believe me, I understand it. I get it. But I think after four years of not having a facility, and I'm kicking myself right now, not coming here four years ago. I didn't anticipate it was gonna take this long. Because prior to that, the DPW would fill the holes. They would do what they could, okay? Was it adequate? Yeah, it was helpful, sure. Were there puddles on the track at times, puddles on the basketball court, no doubt about it. Did they tell us it's because of which way the wind blew, was blowing? Yeah. Did I understand that? Not entirely, that I need to, no, not really. But there were days that the fieldhouse was dry. There were days that we had fantastic practices. Now, four years into it, the team's smaller than it's ever been in recent memory. Our kids don't have a sense of home pride. Our kids pay a user fee for a bus, coaching salaries, a uniform, and minimal equipment. It just doesn't make sense. At that facility, we've been fortunate enough to break a national record in the distance penalty relay, for a team to ever go under ten minutes. Okay, I was an athlete at the time, had nothing to do with it. But nonetheless, that facility influenced that team's fees. Secondly, we have upwards of fifteen athletes in college currently competing at the collegiate level. That's at all three divisions, and that includes Ivy League. I think we have combined more student athletes that go off to college to compete at the collegiate level at a high level, or no matter what level it is, than any other program combined. I think it's time, and I honor and respect what you said earlier about putting up some money and let's, you know, show us the dollars. But I think it's time. And if it's a million dollars, I think we need to find a million dollars, because our kids deserve it better. Whether it be basketball, right, their facility, that facility is not adequate, but it's usable. The track is not usable. Four years is enough. Our seniors will not have a home meet. Likely, our seniors next year won either. I'd hate to see our freshmen not have a home meet either. Thank you.
Thank you. So the issue is, what can we as a school committee do to push this forward?
My suggestion, well, I just want to piggyback a little bit. My son did track in middle school, and the middle school program is actually a very robust program. So it's not like kids are not into running. There's a big cross-country team, I think there were forty kids, maybe, in the middle school cross-country this fall. I think last year was thirty-eight. There's a big track and field group in the middle school. So, you know, they're looking for progression in a program at the high school level. And as he says, four years is long enough. My suggestion to begin is that we, as a committee, make a request to get a study of, not a study, but literally have a designer come in and figure out what needs to happen there and get some parameters around, how do we fix it? We knew, we know the problem. We know, that's been identified. Now it's, what is the solution? I don't think we need to talk about, is it needed? Is it time for it? Is it whatever? I mean, the first thing we need to start with is getting the funding in place to come up with a design, just like we did on the roof, right? That's the first step. And that's really the only funding we can ask for to begin with, because we don't know what the cost is. We know it's gonna be a lot. I do think we need to advocate that this is something that the city, you know, comes up with either borrowing, or free cash, or something, to keep moving this forward. Because this is, this is our, this is a core thing our schools are supposed to be providing. This is not, you know, something extra. This is part of our core. You know, not to mention, we do gym classes and everything else in there, and the community wants to use it. So it's a phenomenal facility to have events and do things. And it can bring in more money. You know, we do do building use fees if it's a usable facility. So I would like to make a motion that we, as a committee, request from the administration funding for the designer plan to fix the fieldhouse.
I'll second that. Is that a motion?
Well, it's, well.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion, and second the discussion.
I'm a little confused, because when we attempted to talk about projects in the past and our needs, we were told that there's a city ordinance and we're supposed to request to the city. And we did that, and nothing's happened. And I get that, because there's a lot of things going on in Gloucester. We're not, we're not the only building that needs assistance. But I'm hearing that City Council President is pushing it back on us to get a plan. Okay. So I'm wondering, how do we move forward to work together? Because I feel like there's, we do a motion to request money. They're gonna say, what do you need the money for? So I just want to make sure that we're all working together, which is great to have the mayor and the school committee.
She just said it. There's a plan. We need someone to come in to tell us what we need. She just said the plan. That's not for getting them the plan. You can't, we can't sit there and say, well, we need a million dollars.
Right, we need an assessment.
You need an assessment of what was needed. That's what we need to do, and we need a plan to set it up. This is the first year. Fortunately, everything's not gonna be done any year. I don't care what everyone says about the free cash. It's not all gonna be spent in one place. It, we have capital. We have this. We need money to build the school. We need, we borrowed money to get the roof. We're borrowing money for a new school, for the assessment of that. We have roads to repair. People will say, well, you know, they may have a hole. At least they got a cone over the hole. I got a hole in the street that I just lost a tire on. There are things that we're doing, but we're setting up a plan. And what we're doing is, we're setting up actually, believe it or not, because by the time we finish, it's gonna be starting over again, a twenty-five-year plan. We're working on a twenty-five-year plan, because we need people to say, wait a minute, we can't repeat this. We're doing that. And that's the beginning, is, let's see how, we sit together, the superintendent's with myself, we'll sit down and say, look, what do we need? How much do we get? What else is, what is major? Okay, now, the bleachers is not my major priority. The floor would be my major priority, not the bleachers, because they can be remotely done by, manually. They can, when we have a head notice, because.
Wait, wait, we discuss a motion.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that we need someone to come and tell us what needs to be done.
Right, so I just want to finish.
You need a plan on that.
So I'm just saying, I want to support this motion, but I just want to make sure it's the right motion. That's why I'm, this is leading to a question. So I'm seeing that we have a motion to go to the city, but the city at the same time is saying we have to come up with a plan. So is this the right procedure that we're doing right now that's gonna initiate something to happen in the very near future? In other words, I'm asking a procedural question. This motion gets approved, it goes to the city council. Does this then go on the city council agenda very soon? Or does this get lost in the request with all the city as a whole? And then to come back and say, we're doing an assessment of the whole city through this feasibility study of all the buildings, it's gonna get put into that.
A plan will be.
My question is, if we approve this motion tonight, are we gonna get a rather quick response from somebody to say yes or no about the funding? That's all I want to know, because I don't want this to get lost, and three months later, we're not.
Are you gonna show me how we're gonna pay it? She just said, well, you know, we can get fees. You need to work on that. You can't just borrow money and expect everyone to know pay.
I would like to know that there's gonna be an assessment of that fieldhouse within the next month or two or three. How do we get there?
All we can do is ask for it.
Just an assessment. So will this make an assessment happen in the next two or three months?
Do you have any money in the school budget?
I'm asking if this is the right procedure.
I don't know, but the city has money in the school budget. What do you do with your budget?
Asking if this is the right procedure to get an assessment done, because if it isn't, then maybe we do need to find money, and I'm okay with that. I just want an assessment done. Not paid.
Well, we need to discuss that. We need, he needs to bring it out. That's right. We need to bring it forward. Didn't I just say? Your chair, our superintendent, will sit with us and figure out what we need to be done.
So by me supporting this motion.
Let's just, let's just take it down a notch here. There's a motion before us. The motion is to request, not the city council, we've already sent something to you.
That's right.
It's to request that the administration bring forward a plan of making, making, of hiring an architectural engineering firm to assess and come up with a plan to remediate the floor in the fieldhouse. That can't be part of the big plan. I mean, it's not what Doran Whittier has been hired to do. They're gonna talk about general big things. This is a very specific thing. That, and they would do an estimate, and then, then, once we have a plan and, and a estimate, then we can start talking about where we're gonna get the money.
Thank you.
But we need to get the plan. And the plan, I don't know what the plan's gonna cost. And it's not an option to put it out for bid.
I know that. I just want to know that we're gonna get an assessment if I vote yes on this motion within the next three months or so. That's all. We do in the right action right now.
It's the right action, but we can't predict what's gonna happen.
Right.
We will have done what we can. If it doesn't happen, then we'll do something else.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
So I just want, I mean, I think we brought it up with the city council a month ago to put some light on the urgency of the need. And we're talking about it tonight also to elevate the urgency of the need. We cannot have class after class graduate with the gym the way it is. So I think part of that, that request is also forming a small group, as he said, someone knowledgeable about track and what the gym should really be. So that, that's part of the core group that figures out who's the right people to help them with the design and what our needs are. So that would be what I would hope, is that when you guys talk about what is the logistics of all this, that you would find some people, whether it's two, three, four, or whatever, that help inform how you get down.
So you just said the design of a whole new thing. Now, that's what I'm saying. Is it getting a new floor? That's what you need to bring forward. Is it getting a new floor? Is it getting this, it getting that? Not a design of a whole new.
Can we just move the vote?
Well, Dr. Sapphire had his hand up.
Yeah, okay. I just want to say, as with, as with any building project in the city, there would be a building committee formed, which would, that's how it works.
Okay.
So that goes without saying. Dr. Sapphire.
Being a master of the obvious, we have two agencies in town that have, well, the closest to having the expertise for identifying the needs and leading us in direction. Obviously, the Department of Public Works, and we have a housing architect, and the aforementioned Doran Whittier, who should be part of a group that can take a look at this thing, hear what the needs are from the sports, the athletic department, have the city representative, the school representative, DPW, and Doran Whittier, and let's sit down and talk about what it's gonna take.
Absolutely. We can do that tomorrow.
And they're gonna be able to say, this is what needs to be done. And Doran Whittier, who's under contract, may be able to draw it up for us. Or they may say, here's a group that should need to contact.
I agree. Come to my office tomorrow. We can do it.
I approve that motion.
Yeah, absolutely. That's all I want here. That's a point, and thank you, Dr. Sapphire.
I just want to add to what Rich was saying, is it's very, one of the key points he just made was that Doran Whittier is under contract and can be expanded upon without going back out the bid, because they're an architectural firm. So this could, if everybody wants it to, go a little quicker. It moves at a snail's pace. Let's get real here. But it can, it can get in the works, and I don't see any impediment sitting at this table here.
No, absolutely not.
I don't see nothing but, but intentions to move this forward.
Doran Whittier has been very accommodating in the past as well.
So, do we have to pay Doran Whittier, or are they in the house?
They're already on the.
No, 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 you'd have to pay.
Whatever, whatever, it's long, if they're under contract, it's not gonna be.
I'm only asking, is there a motion on the table to request money? Do we need the money or not?
No.
Is Doran Whittier, that's all I'm asking now. There's a motion.
Well, there's a motion on the table.
To request money?
And the motion on the table, do you have it, Marie? Could you read it back to us?
The motion to request from the administration funding for a designer plan to fix the fieldhouse floor.
So do we need money or not?
Yes. Doran Whittier is not, they're under contract, which means it doesn't have to go out for bid. It doesn't mean they're not gonna charge us money to do it.
Can I, can I just add a fine point on that, though? We are not requesting the funding. We are requesting the study.
This motion is requesting the funding, so.
We don't have the authority to get the money.
Then we need to withdraw this motion, because that's why I'm asking all these questions. I don't think we're doing.
We only have the authority to request the plan.
That's right.
So, can I amend? Yeah. Why don't you withdraw your motion, Doran Whittier? Yeah, do a motion.
Okay. The school committee requests from the administration a plan to fix the Gloucester High School fieldhouse floor.
Wait, did you withdraw your motion?
No.
Yes.
No, no vote.
You have to withdraw, and then you have to. You have to withdraw, and the president says to withdraw their second.
I withdraw my original motion.
Second.
You withdraw yours.
And then.
Okay.
There's no vote necessary.
Okay.
No vote necessary. All right, now, the motion that was just made.
Is what, Marie?
Request from the administration a plan to fix the fieldhouse floor.
And then they're gonna send it back. They just told you you need a plan. Why don't you make a motion, is, I make a motion that the administration, with the superintendent and whoever, work at a plan together to get this forward with the architect that we have.
Thank you. That's a motion.
Okay, so let's, let's.
I second that, whatever.
Okay.
Keep going back with plans and plans. They'll come back and say you need another plan.
Exactly.
Dr. Sapphire said it perfectly. Repeat it, put that in the motion, we're done.
So he can't, he can't, so-
I know, but I'm just saying, put it in the motion.
To work with, to work with the city administration.
And, and an architectural firm.
And DPW.
And DPW. And the athletic department.
Thank you.
All of it.
To develop a plan to remediate the floor and the fieldhouse.
Hazardous stuff, setting the fieldhouse to-
Okay. You gonna second?
Second.
Here we go. Is there any further discussion?
So, I, I'm confused as to how, why we have to go through all of this, given that, did we go through any of this when Newell's, we spent over a million dollars fixing Newell, and I recall, did it even come to us?
Well, Newell is a city's facility to start us.
But aren't all of the school buildings city facilities now? We're not in charge of maintaining them anymore, right?
No, we're not in charge of maintaining them, but we, they are under our jurisdiction. Newell's not. Newell's a city facility, just like Meadows is not, but it's on the, but, just to give you an example-
East Gloucester playground.
East Gloucester playground. Uh, but all of the fields at Omeley are. It's just, it's just the way it, it, the-
So, right, so I guess what I'm, what I'm getting to is the whole putting a plan together as requested by Council Lundberg, my understanding, and I might have been wrong, but my understanding is that we are not the appropriate body to create, we are only the appropriate body to identify a need for a correction, something.
So what we, what the motion is right now, is that we're requesting that the administration authorize a, the formation of a group of people that we've named to develop a plan. I mean, that's, that's what my take on that motion is. So it's just, we're just identifying needs and saying, we'd like, we'd like the people
who have control over this to actually do it and enforce it.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Can I say something?
Let's just move this along. We gotta move this along. I gotta move the vote on this.
No, we're gonna have, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Present, opposed.
He gave some money in the-
It's, it's, it's six in favor and one present. And motion carries.
Thank you.
Val, would you like to say something?
The only thing I wanted to say, that we brought this up recently at the joint meeting. It was discussed as one of the three important issues. And as a result, we were very interested in learning more about how we might be able to make some headway. So what you just did right now is perfect for my understanding of what we were hoping to get out of this conversation. And Council Lundberg and I discussed this, and, and I'm, and I'm happy to see that we can start to make some headway. So that's all I want to say, so thank you.
So we, um, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Oh, hi, I-
I don't know how you're gonna beat that, but I do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, the Bay State Reading Institute, the now known as Momenta, has recently completed an analysis of over 5,000 students who had entered kindergarten several years back, up through grade three across six districts. And they notified us that those particular districts made what they referred to as huge gains in terms of their literacy from the spring of the kindergarten year through their grade of three. The analysis, they have, it's, the, the data has not been aligned to any particular districts. They're not public with the names. But what is interesting, that amongst all six districts that made these very, very large gains, Gloucester Elementary Schools were the second highest performing of the six districts. So we have had a long and sustained relationship with Bay State Reading Institute, and our staff members have worked very, very hard. We saw it in our MCAS results as well, that the elementary schools have been showing relatively steady gains over the last couple of years, and data such as that hopefully brings that point home as well. We have a number of folks who, most recent meeting was this morning, to put together a grant called the Comprehensive School Health Service Grant. What we are looking at are alternatives to traditional consequences, traditional disciplines such as out-of-school suspension. It has and continues to be a controversial means for how we attempt to redress some of the wrongs that our students occasionally do. This particular grant, we hope, is going to provide funding so that we can create an in-service, it's not in-service, an in-school suspension program, particularly at the, at the high school, with all sorts of wraparound services as well. Wraparound services referring, of course, to social, emotional, and mental health services. I know that Greg, Patty, were you when I was speaking tomorrow? And, and James Cook, our director of nursing, Chris Cobb, assistant principal, were putting, hopefully, what are close to the finishing touches on this thing, because it's due December 5th. Anything need to be added to this?
No, I think you've got it covered.
Great, great, but it's a, it's a great option. We're looking at a, at a host of, of viable alternatives to the traditional suspension and what we've learned and gleaned, which well, we'd like to share with the middle school as well.
Is that, excuse me, is that like the bridge they were talking about in some of the schools? They have it instead of suspension, some of those?
You may be talking to the, about the, what's called PASS program, and I don't know exactly what PASS stands for, but there are a number of schools and districts on the North Shore that are using something similar through this PASS program. We did have high school administrative presence in the development and formation of that particular program in, in this area, due to budgets, but we're not able to implement it here. But they are going to try to use the principles from that in conjunction with this particular grant in order to create this in-school suspension slash wraparound service program.
Great.
A lot of work's been done since late, late spring or, or this past summer. We have had, we've been, had a group, a contingent, which does include our director Sped and our assistant superintendent, in what's referred to as the Essex County, County Learning Collaborative. And on December the 4th, late afternoon, at Endicott College, they're going to be having a showcase of learning. In other words, it's a culminating project, also designed, I presume, to secure more grant funding towards implementation. And what's unique and interesting about this particular program is that it's also an inter-district program. There are six districts. I believe that had been involved in identifying similar concerns, whether they're academic, social, emotional, what have you, and developing strategic plans in connection with those, in those particular issues. Would you care to elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. The districts involved are Gloucester, Rockport, Haverhill, Danvers, Beverly, and Swanska are the, the districts. And this has been a grant funded by the Tower Foundation and facilitated by the Center for Collaborative Education, and it was to bring teams of seven and sub-teams together to identify common needs. And I think, you know, one day in early June, by the end of the day, we had identified common needs across the seven districts, and those were tier-one academic interventions, social, emotional, learning interventions, and structures, and cultural proficiency. And those were three areas that all districts had in common. And so we've been meeting all for months now, making plans, multi-year plans, and that's what's gonna be shared next week. And my, our understanding is that the Tower Foundation has, has, I'm not sure officially, but informally committed to a second round, which would be the implementation phase of these plans. So my, my takeaway is that anything that gets local districts together to share resources and professional development dollars is, is a great thing. It's been a long time coming, so we're positive about where we're headed. Does anyone have?
I think it's been a great experience, that it has given us access to some experts in many different fields that we've been able to, to work with in order to form our plans, and also just getting to know the staff in other districts that are struggling with some of the same issues. And this has created a forum where we can actually get together and talk about some strategies and share resources. So I think that's the biggest takeaway for me, and one of the highlights of the program is sharing resources with other districts.
So the presentation is on December 4th. These folks have worked long and hard, and I get to watch and I get a meal out of the deal as well, so it's a perfect arrangement, and I thank them for that. Item number five, another grant, this one has been awarded, and I think you might be even be voting on it tonight. It's, it's from Applied Materials, it's through the Gloucester Education Foundation, and it's about empowering girls, female students, for careers in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. If you recall, a couple of years ago, Dunlop and Keating, and technology consultants came into the district, they helped identify a strategic plan for the high school. And then there was an ancillary project that they worked on, which was helping to promote STEM career awareness in our female students. We now, a proposal was put together, I know that Greg worked on it, that's Tina Ramo from the Gloucester Education Foundation, and we're now in a position with the monies that we've received, to begin to implement the program. No small part of which is, is going to involve a mentoring program and some traditional, transitional work where middle school students will have an opportunity to avail themselves of some of the, the rich materials that we have at the high school with respect to the sciences, particularly the hard sciences as well.
This is an interesting grant, because the approach we're taking, I have to hand it to Tina Ramo once again, for sitting down, listening to a few ideas, and coming back with a really terrific grant. The, the difference here is that rather than simply taking the recommendations made by the two consultants a couple of years ago, the approach is to have a group of students at the high school, or the ones who have gone through the elementary, middle, and high school programs, to get them together and equip, equip them with the information, the resources, and the skills to take a look at what their very own data is telling them, and to measure that, weigh that against the experiences that they, they had firsthand, and to essentially empower a group of students to learn about the conditions in the school, to learn about opportunities that exist outside, to understand some of the cultural forces that, that shape attitudes around science, and for that team of students to be given a facilitator to discover their, their own, to discover sort of the territory and then make the recommendations. So by the end of this, we will have a group of students who will have accessed local resources, experts in the field, professors, scientists, who will, will work that to do a self-study, basically. And then they will use that sort of inside knowledge and the external expert knowledge that came to make recommendations about connecting with students. When we know they begin to change their attitudes about science, if you talk to the same students in fifth grade, they're so excited, and they wanna be astronauts and physicists, and they wanna do all these kinds of things, and somewhere, and this is not in Gloucester, this is nationally, somewhere along the way, they are shaped by ideas about, well, what I can or can't do, or, you know, what's, what's typical path, or, and, and so we'll really have them identify those moments as they look back in their career, students, and create mentoring structures, create opportunities for fifth-grade students, middle school students to come and work side by side with them in a biology lab, while they're still shaping those understandings about what sciences and where the places, students should, will be shadowing engineering students, but will also try to get a, an outside mentoring program too. So it's building on some work that we've had done and bringing it in and empowering the students to, to do that study more thoroughly. So I'm looking forward to this project.
Okay, any questions of the superintendent? Do we have a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if unanimous. I'm going to take building finance first, our subcommittee reports. This was just a meeting that was held just before this meeting, so it should be fresh in your mind.
Should be, I would think, wouldn't it?
You got a little help on your end.
Yeah, I do. All right, so. There we go. Thank you very much. So, I'll just do the highlights. So we did talk about the bleachers, and that, one side of the motor does work, so they just swapped which side the teams, and the coaches were gonna stand, that they didn't, never extended the bleachers on, and they're using the bleacher side, the motor does work, and the other motor's been ordered, it's gonna take four to five weeks to replace it. By the backstop, we heard eight out of 10 are now actually usable. The electrical shop floor, the wood in the floor has been replaced, as was cited by-
DPW.
DPW replaced it, but it was cited by DSE.
DSE, right.
And, and also, these were all cited by DSE in the vocational school. Carbon D U shop, the tiles were repaired, there was many missing tiles. The machine tool tech floor needs, that will be patched during the winter break, and there seems to be also an issue with the Omeley kitchen floor drains that seem to be rising above the slab, so they're investigating that right now. We already talked about the fieldhouse, so I don't think I'll revisit that. Doran Whittier is going to take a look at the auto shop loft and see what it's rated for to hold, because that was also a sighting in that, a finding in that, the report. And also, they'll be checking out the crane that's in the machine tool tech shop. And also, there's some ceiling anchored shelving in the cabinetry shop that they'll also be looking at to make sure that they're all rated for what, the weights that they have on it. We also discussed, since the rest of the city is, the city's requiring all the businesses to go to compostable, compostable-
Compostable.
Compostable materials for their takeout. We were discussing about doing it in the schools, so we discussed having the, the food service director and the CFO come back to us with what it would cost us to phase it in for this year, and possibly transfer that out of our contingency account, and then, but, what it would cost to budget it in for FY '20. And that was about it.
I could just add one thing, because it's been an item that's been brought up in the school committee, but-
Oh, no, we had one other thing too.
The, yes, great, the girls bathrooms, there were six partitions that they bought on last night. The full committee, the district council, we placed on it.
Yeah.
So it had been recommended, three of nothing less, there's everybody to be an F, to, to repair and replace the partitions in the bathrooms at Omeley, which is a good thing.
I put that forward.
You're right.
So, I thought, I, um, I, um, some of the moms, the PTOs contacted me, and we fixed, we put some locks on some of them until we can get them repaired, because some of them didn't even have any locks, and that's inappropriate, so we did immediate repairs, band-aids for now, but we are-
Jonathan, I just- Is that all the, all the girls' bathrooms at the, at Omeley, or is it just, I mean, how many are there? I don't know.
It's probably pretty close to, but I can get that answer for you. It's $32,000 worth of repairs.
That's, I was wondering, okay.
We also voted, unless somebody has one question about bathroom stalls. We also voted the, the school resource officer transfer. What, do we need to take that up tonight? It's not on the agenda.
We'll have to do it next time.
So next time, so we voted the $60,000 that's in our budget that every year we transfer over to the city's, to the police department budget, so that transfer will be coming next time.
I just have a question, I just wanna go back to all the excellent work by the DPW, all the repairs that are getting done. So a lot of the stuff you talked about was cited in the CPR report, is there anything left outstanding to be addressed?
Come to program.
Come to program.
We'll, we'll go over it again, December 6th.
I mean, DPW-wise, building-wise, for fixing things, that wouldn't be discussed at program.
We narrowed it down quite a lot.
Yeah, it sounds like you have, that's why I'm asking.
I can, I can send the school committee some advanced notice, and if you want more detail, come on December 6th. But I'll send something out this week.
And it's just a simple question, because it seems like we're addressing almost everything there.
We're, we're close, but there's, there's 35 items, so I can't, you know, I have to look at them.
For the-
She's talking about just the actual physical plan. She's talking about just the actual physical plan issues.
I'm talking about just building issues that DPW would be involved in, not program matters.
No, it's mostly, it's all safety-related issues.
Okay.
You're talking, it's not really CPR, it's a separate report, it's a safety report.
Oh, okay.
So it's a separate entity.
All right, that's a different one. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was the confusion.
Yes, okay. Oh my, I don't know, 35.
Okay. Okay, we, we have, we've forced, you can take up anything else besides the policy in the meeting.
We took up the policy and the draft procedures.
Okay. All right, well, we are going to, the, this policy was, came through program and then went to personnel. And so we're going, on the agenda tonight is the first reading. Do you want to, you both should lead into it, but...
I just want to give a little update about what we did in personnel last night. So personnel met last night, it was Michelle, Tony and I, and reviewed the policy before us, the program had already put forward. I just want to give a huge shout out to Dr. Sapphire and Grant Harris for bringing this policy forward. It's a combination of a lot of different policies throughout New England, I think is a good way to say it, and a lot of effort went in to get this document before us, so I just want to commend you for that, because I think it's excellent where we are now. Program put it forward last, at our last meeting, I had asked to have it sent back to personnel because I was concerned that there wasn't an ability for parents or others to access video written in the policy. I know it was coming forward in the procedures, but I wanted to see it in the policy so that we knew it was law and regulation as opposed to procedures that we don't necessarily govern in the superintendent does. So the couple of changes that we did from program to personnel was we changed the title, as you can see, Michelle brought up a good point, it didn't mention buses, so anyone searching, the policies wouldn't have known unnecessarily that this contained to the buses. That was one change we did and we added a whole section that was, like I just explained, was in the procedures, it's now here in the policy that explains a process of how someone outside of administration or law enforcement can request to see any audio or video, that we may still have in our possession if we retained it long enough. And then we just took off some references to MASC, because this isn't a MASC policy anymore, it's a conjunction of a bunch of things. So other than that, it doesn't matter to me how we proceed, but there was a recommendation from the personnel subcommittee to the full committee to have this be the first reading tonight.
So I guess all I would ask would be, because you did present before this policy.
No, we haven't done anything.
We didn't, because we knew it should go through personnel also.
Okay, so, but it did go through.
Yeah.
And it was a full recommendation, so it's, I guess the question would be, do you have any problems with the changes? Okay, all right, then let's proceed with the first reading of the, my computer's dead.
File ECAF.
File ECAF, and I would start by requesting that we take a vote to waive the actual reading of the policy.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on that? Normally we just reread the whole thing into the record, but it's also written down and it will go into the record as it's written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Let's proceed with the, with the policy. Do we have a motion to move forward with, to accept this as the first reading, which means it will come back at our next meeting after whatever discussion we have and whatever changes can be made. So.
I move that we approve file ECAF, security cameras in the school buses as presented as the first reading. Second.
Okay, discussion.
I'm just wondering, for the public's sake and for anyone who's going to be concerned about this, if we should give some sort of highlights as to what the policy says. I know we kind of, we just waived it, but if we're concerned, if anyone's watching at home, if not, as long as at some point this policy gets out to all parents and students prior to it going into effect in January.
Well, the purpose of having the first reading is so that people can weigh in on it. So I would suggest that we could post this up on our website, should any people out in the audience want to read the policy and contact their favorite school committee member and tell them what they should do.
And now when I say that, I'm not necessarily looking for feedback, I'm just trying to figure out how we're telling the public what we're doing, because we haven't talked about it as a group, I don't know if we need to, I just...
Well, that's what we're doing now.
Yeah. But I mean the content of it.
Okay.
I think Dr. Sapphire should give some highlights on it.
I can, but I should also reassure the public that there's no absolute time that we have to put this into motion, which means that we will ensure that there is ample notification and the appropriate signage on the buses and such, so we'll make sure that there's plenty of time for people to be notified and even to respond if necessary. But the, the policy, the draft policy itself talks about, you know, the procedures are in place regarding the use of cameras, the use of cameras and audio on our school buses, disclosure of either video or audio and what the procedures are for that, the retention of the videos or the audio recordings, there's information about that, the disposal and the security of the video recordings and photographs from security cameras as well. And there's an assurance that all of those particular aspects, use, viewing, disclosure, retention, disposal, and security are all done in accordance with the applicable laws that govern these particular issues and situations. The beginning of the, of the draft talks about the school committee's responsibility to maintain not only the buildings in good condition, but also what takes place and to protect from vandalism and so on and so forth, that it's a, it's the school committee's obligation to protect what is one of the greatest of the investments for the particular community, and that in so doing that they have authorized the use of cameras in our buildings and on our property, and also are authorizing the use of cameras and audio equipment in our buses as well. I spoke before about the need to notify, notify students, staff, parents, guardians, and everyone else, that there'll be letters that will go out, there'll be appropriate signage, and we'll make sure that these are in all of our appropriate handbooks as well. It speaks about the proper procedures and we'll make sure that there is a detailed list of procedures which were discussed last night as well. And what was added by the personnel subcommittee has to do with the, the policy procedures that govern requests for video or audio recording. There are specifics, for example, that a request by a parent or any interested quester must send notification in writing to me within five days after, after the recording has been made. One of the conversations that took place last night was that if there were extenuating circumstances, that period of time, those five days, can be extended, you know, for common sense reasons, and how requests for viewing will take place, who's there when it's viewed, obviously the principal has to be there, nobody's going to be watching these things. Solo, the maintenance of a written log, so that we can keep a record of who has asked with their signatures and so on. In terms of the procedures and stuff, the, the security piece is extremely important. The machines themselves, the only physical access to the machines, the internal mechanisms of the machines, will be information technology department. And they'll be taking the recordings, maintaining confidentiality and security, and then we also, as I mentioned, have procedures for who can, who can observe and when and how the public record requests take place. And then last, of course, there's the whole issue of privacy and ensuring the privacy of those who are not directly involved, but who may be in the recordings themselves, even if that means blurring out faces, and we've already actually done that in certain circumstances with cameras that are located in our buildings.
I just wanted to add too, if this is approved, if this motion is approved too, I would just expect that we can give a copy to the transportation negotiation team. We are currently in negotiations with transportation and there is a sentence in here that would probably need to be impact barred if this is what we approve tonight. So just know that that's going to be part of approving this, we would need to get conversation outside of us regarding this policy before it's approved.
Any further discussion? Okay, there was some, in the early discussions, there was some discussion about how this actually worked, how they worked, the cameras actually worked in the, in the buses and what they would be able to see. Is there any chance that we could have a demonstration at some point?
I imagine so. I'll speak with Grant, our IT director, and we'll see what's up and where and how, and I'm sure we can make an arrangement.
Maybe, instead of having students on there, have the bus driver do their shutdown procedure or startup procedures.
Right.
So you have a body or...
Then there was conversation about that, you turn the machine, you turn the engine off, then the cameras and the audio work on battery, and then the question, one of the considerations was, well, how long do you leave that running on battery before it shuts down? And taking into account the responsibilities that bus drivers have is a piece of that equation.
Any further discussion? Can we get a little call list?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. We have a number of action items. We have three grants from the Education Foundation, and the first one is $2,500 to West Parish School for the 2019 theater production.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Simply that these are our annual contributions from the Gloucester Education Foundation and based upon requests and needs from the schools themselves, the amount has been increased from $1,500 to $2,500.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. $2,500 to East Gloucester School for upcoming theater productions.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, twenty-four thousand dollars to GHS for Empowering Girls for the STEM careers, that's the, was discussed earlier in the superintendent's report. A motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Once again, we are deeply in debt and thankful for the Gloucester Education Foundation.
Amen.
And it goes on and on. We have Perkins grant for $25,600, this is a vocational, it's a federal grant, and it's, it goes...
Chapter 74.
It's chapter 74, it's a, the motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Can we have a referral to be an F what this $25,000 is used for?
I can tell you...
At some point, oh, you can? Excellent.
Let's see, $5,710 is for, is a statement for a program leader.
Okay.
Let's give...
But that can only be used for up to three years, right?
I think so, yes, yes. Let's see, instructional technology, $9,175, that's for a number of online programs, Master Cam, which is $3,500, it's an upgrade, SolidWorks, $3,800, that's also CAD, which is an upgrade, something called Cam Instructor, which is probably a new online tutorial program, that's $7,750. Tooling U is another online program, that's for $1,100. Then there are general classroom supplies and, are you ready for this?
Yeah.
Tooling and small machines for $4,445, a Kindex turning tool holder for $7,826, carb milling insert for $2,45, top-notch something and something tool holder for $9,632, a grooving insert for $9,770, these are for those CM machines.
Yeah.
So, I know all about it.
Yeah.
Catalog turn tool holders for $7,826. It sounds like that's strange. Oh, boy, six-inch bench grinders, now we're coming home. Eight-inch bench grinders, bench grinder stands, a boring turning facing holder for $6,9868, some sort of HSS cutoff blade, screw-on turning tool holders, comparative overlays $1,7640, coolant, water economixer for $215. And if you're ready for this, MicroSol extended life coolant, $1,499, shipping $6,47.
Those are safe to say that pretty much all the vocational jobs are getting something.
Yeah.
That's all I need.
Machine jobs getting more. And, and there's also some instructional, some additional computers as well for that.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Is there any further discussion about the Perkins grant? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we have a grant for Energy North Inc. for the amount, in the amount of $500 to Gloucester High School. In this grant, there's some requirements that posters be put up in the school, and I believe that's the poster that they're asking be put up. Now, the, the history of this is a little odd in that, I'm trying to remember his name, the, one of the auto mechanic teachers has a garage in Rockford. And he applies for this grant through his garage, through his jackpot. And the posters are displayed in his garage, they've never been displayed at the high school. Now, it would appear that that is some sort of violation of the grant. So anyways, that's, that's what we know about it, unless you know more than I do. That's all I was able to find out. So...
It does say ExxonMobil in the bottom right-hand corner.
Yeah. And what is this money used for?
I'll get a move and then discuss what's under discuss.
No, I just wanted to play out what it was we were talking about, so either move and do accept the grant.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Whatever, just pick one of us. What do we do with this money? It's $500.
$500, I believe it goes to the automotive...
We need oil or something?
I can, I'll have that. It just popped up, I think.
So this, I think comes through every year, this was the first thing, one of the first meetings, this was coming through, I'd asked about the poster then, and if you read the letter, not only are you required to post the poster in the school that receives it, but also there needs to be a demonstration of community awareness from, so I guess Sandy Bay Services has to either provide a school or PTA newsletter reporting on the grant, a community newspaper or newsletter article, or letters of appreciation for community school students, et cetera. So there needs to be both this poster in the school that receives the funds and something published, the school department, but the recipient, which is Sandy Bay Services, has to publish something, you know, where the PTO says, "Thank you so much ExxonMobil or Energy North for this." And so, you know, I'm, I'm not comfortable accepting a grant if we're not going to be following through with what the requirements of that grant are. However, I also would not be comfortable following through with the requirements of this grant. You know, frankly, you look at the poster, it's in their branded colors, their logo appears, and ExxonMobil, the words appear three times. If you told me for $500 I could get a 20 by 30 inch poster put in the high school with my company's logo on it, I'd donate every year also. And I started going through the, I started going through the, the policies and file KCD, which is Public Gifts to the School, says, "In the case of gifts from industry, business, or special interest groups, no extensive advertising or promotion may be involved in any donation to the schools." Well, this crosses the line into exten- Well, this crosses the line into extensive advertising. I'd have to look to see what we do otherwise. But I don't know of any other grants that come through that require this. And it's not like, you know, New Balance buying naming rights to say that this is a five hundred dollar gift with a lot of strings attached. And so if we want the five hundred dollars, we go through with this, I think we have to go through with putting that poster up.
Where, where the schools are not required to do this.
The schools, like, except the grant.
No, no, read it. It says, "Required from all retailers who receive educational alliance." Grants. We're not the retailer.
Right, it says, please ensure the school receives.
And failure to do so may render the retailer ineligible to receive a grant in the following year. We're required to do nothing.
No, we're required to display it.
Display it. It's one poster.
So I'm saying, again, if this school committee is comfortable with that, five hundred dollars gets that in the high school. And if another company wanted to give you five hundred dollars and they get to put a poster up in the high school, and my company wants to give you five hundred dollars, that goes, my poster's up in the high school. If that's the way you want to do it, that's fine. But I would just caution the school committee that I think this is a step in the wrong direction. This is, you know, this is getting a brand in front of high school age new drivers who probably have a brand loyalty to a gas station guy, right? And they're walking by this and they're going to see that, that logo on their way to the cafeteria, their way down the hall.
And that's going to make.
They're not even going to give a.
All right, all right.
They're not going to care.
So again, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not here to teach a, a marketing class.
Don't look at me, I'm the only one that gets the gavel.
I'm not, I'm not here to teach a, a marketing class, but brand recognition is a huge part and getting your name and your logo out as many times as many places as possible is huge for developing brand loyalty. And so, again, if we're okay with that and we're okay with whoever wants to give us five hundred dollars, goes to poster in the high school like that, then okay.
How long is that going to be posted up?
Forever.
Every year they give us a grant, right?
I mean, but how long? A day? The whole year? The whole school year?
Then say.
That, to be fair, does not say.
So put it up and take it down.
Are you all set, Joe?
Sure.
Melissa.
So first I want to say I'm not a fan of Exxon. Don't like the way they handled their, their burns and all the oil and everything that happened. But with that being put aside, I don't see that as excessive. But even putting that aside, I've been at the tech for ten years. We have brands all over the place in our vocational shops. And actually, the more branding you have, you, other CS competition, they come in, they donate things. It's generated thousands, if not millions, of dollars of donations to the school. You walk in, you see Hyundai, you see all the different names, no matter what shop you walk in. So I personally don't have a problem, besides the fact that it's excellent, but I do appreciate Jack Ford and all that he does and thinks that he does good things for the kids and has excellent intentions. So with that being said, I would support the motion, but I would also encourage more posters and things to come forward to put on the walls because it all goes to school pride and the reason why we're in a vocational program to begin with. So I think this is maybe a first step of something being put on the wall and hopefully other things will come forward with a lot of money behind that.
Well, it probably should go where the grant is going to be used, which is the automotive shop.
Right, it's not for the whole school. So I support it a hundred percent.
Eight, eight inch stand for.
Uh-huh.
And if we're going to, if we tend to not vote on this tonight, I would ask that Jack come forward.
We put it off to another meeting and have Jack come forward and explain it. But I don't want to see this go away.
I would, I would, if, I would like to make a motion to table this until our next meeting because we have a policy about advertising in the schools. And I don't think that has been explored. And, and I'm not sure what it says about this sort of thing. I know what it says about the side to buses and, and it fields, but I, I don't know what it says about this sort of thing. And so I'd like to know what to do with the money. You know, I don't know if, if, so, does anybody second that?
I'll second David.
David.
Could we, Jack, too, come forward to talk about why he, why this is important to him?
Okay. Any, any further discussion with David's motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're, MSBA, there's a meeting scheduled for next, not tomorrow, but next Thursday, a building committee meeting. And it's basically just sort of a, a review of the timeline and, and it's a preparation for the kickoff meeting, which is when MSBA comes to East Gloucester School and basically just goes through the rules and how we're going, how we're going to proceed and what the benchmarks are as well as business type of things. But that will be on Wednesday, the twelfth?
December twelfth.
December twelfth, I think it's on Wednesday. And it'll be at East Gloucester School at, then, two o'clock, three o'clock, after the kids are out. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report on. MSBA, is there any other new business or old business? If not, we're going to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a number of grievances that are in, in process. And we will come out of executive session only to adjourn. So do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Do we all call vote?
Mr. Vazza.
Yes.
Mr. Vazza, Chair and Bo.
Yes.
Ms. Sweet.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
May you take it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we will take a five minute recess and we will reconvene in the executive session. Thank you very much. Good evening.